I'd like to call the meeting of County Council and Order tonight. This is September 22, 2015 meeting. It's a pleasure to have so many with us tonight. Must have something special going on tonight. I'm always here. Good to see everybody tonight. We welcome you anytime. And as always, we have implication tonight by the County Council. Then we'll have our pleasure, Alicia Starlight, all the time.
Join me in one prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to serve the people in Lawrence County. Please give us strength to choose the path of righteousness, keeping you in all that we do. Please guide us to do what pleases you first and foremost. Lord, give us strength to defend liberty. Please be with our servicemen and women around the world, police officers, firefighters, EMS, and all the first responders. We be with the people of our county, state, and country. In our Heavenly Father's name, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the flag of the United States of America. In this republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on our agenda tonight will be the approval of our agenda for September 22, 2015, if we have a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to your current agenda for September 22, 2015.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, if any is good. If none, we'll vote by the show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven, blue. Next thing is approval of our minutes for our past September 8, 2015 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So blue, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second, if any additions or noises seem necessary.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any discussion? If none, we'll show by raising our right hand, all in favor. Seven, blue. Number one on our agenda tonight is our presentation of our Henry Lawrence Award. We've got three people, Mr. Siggers and Mr. Moss, Miss Cuthbert. And I'm gonna read this proclamation and then I'll ask others to come up. The Henry Lawrence Award for service. Whereas Lawrence County Council by ordinance established the Henry Lawrence Award for merit, I can't pronounce, service to be awarded from time to time for distinguished service to Lawrence County. Whereas, herefore, the Lawrence County Council further acknowledges that the Henry Lawrence Award is the highest and most prestigious award bestowed by the County of Lawrence to its citizens. Whereas, these three people have provided many volunteer hours within our schools, community, scouting as well, contribution, countless hours dedicated to the preservation and provocation of historical value within Lawrence County. Whereas, these three persons, many accomplishments, can be celebrated as the founder of the Great. But anyway, whereas Lawrence County Council finds honoring these three people for their depth of contributions to the community and for the vision and foresight that has enriched the county as a whole through their hard work, their strength and character. Now it be resolved that Lawrence County, South Carolina has provided effective compassion toward the historical community of Lawrence County in light of the foresight and vision and enriched many years of service to the county, state, and country. Lawrence County Council does hereby bestow the Henry Lawrence Award to you. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Ted Naves to come up and Mr. Diane D. Cuthbert to come up and anybody that wants to come up with her.
I think it's a great honor to be able to accept this, Lord. I couldn't find anybody that was in more qualified than you did or was. You've spent a lifetime in the history of Lawrence County, very old and old especially, the revolutionary woman, all the others. You've been so blessed to Lawrence County. I'm really proud of you, great to Lawrence County, too, Charles. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then we'll go over here and sit down and let's see.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go up here and give the little two. I'm gonna continue with Miss Cuthbert. Whereas, Miss Diane D. Cuthbert has provided many volunteer hours within the schools, community, and scouting as well, its contribution, and countless hours dedicated to the preservation and provocation of historical value within Lawrence County. Whereas, among Miss Cuthbert's many accomplishments, she can be celebrated as the founder of the Great Old Orleans Historical Society and the annual Pioneer Day festivities, so as to preserve the history and historical structures of the area. Whereas, Miss Cuthbert so unselfishly provided funding as well as dedicating a land toward her preservation efforts. And whereas, Lawrence County Council finds that honoring Miss Diane D. Cuthbert for her depth of contributions to the community and for the vision and foresight that has enriched the county as a whole through her hard work, strength, and character. And now therefore be it resolved, Miss Diane D. Cuthbert in Lawrence County, South Carolina, has provided effective leadership and compassion toward the historical community of Lawrence County and in light of her vision and foresight that has enriched many years of service to our city, county, state, and country for our service, Lawrence County Council does hereby bestow the Henry Lawrence Award. Thank you, Miss Cuthbert.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert.
Our next recipient is Mr. Marvin Moss. Whereas, Lawrence County Council by ordinance established Henry Lawrence Award for notorious service to be awarded from time to time for distinguished service to Lawrence County. Whereas, herefore, the Lawrence County Council further acknowledges that the Henry Lawrence Award is the highest and most prestigious award bestowed by the County of Lawrence to its citizens. Whereas, Lawrence County Council wishes to commend Mr. Marvin D. Moss upon his retirement and for the many years of dedication of serving Lawrence County. He hadn't retired yet. Whereas, Mr. Moss served over 27 years in manufacturing until 1999. He was named President and CEO of the Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce and in 2007 was named Executive Director of Lawrence County Economic Development Corporation. Whereas, Mr. Moss's career within development corporation has been marked by exceptional foresight, a commitment to planning, leadership, and attention to detail that resulted in the consistent economic growth of Lawrence County. And whereas, Mr. Moss continued to represent Lawrence County well within the realms of having been named Local Developer of the Year in 2011 by the South Carolina Economic Development Association in 2012. The Southern Business Development recognized Mr. Moss as one of the top 10 people who have made a difference in the South. And in 2015, he received the Distinguished Service Award from the Upstate South Carolina Alliance. And whereas, Marvin, knowledge, experience, dedication to the County of Lawrence, South Carolina, will be missed when he retires. Now therefore be it resolved, Mr. Marvin D. Moss of Lawrence County has provided effective leadership, dedicated service to the citizens of Lawrence County. Lawrence County Council does hereby bestow Henry Lawrence Award to Marvin D. Moss. And I'll ask Miss Diane, Mr. Moss, and the family to come up, please.
You've done so much for Lawrence County and through your commitment to this county to help improve the economic development, we are thankful. You're a committed person, you're a man of, you're a gentleman. I said, mother raised you well, and you're a man of integrity, but you can tell that in the way you treat your family and your friends and your coworkers. And I could go on and on and on, but I can only say we appreciate all the work you have done for us. And I don't think the people realize how the city, county would be if it had been for some of your efforts, your resources, your time and energy. And we thank you for all of it. But I really want you to enjoy summer retirement. I know someone will have this for you, but I want you to make sure you enjoy summer with yourself. It's a good organization to be a part of. Love you much.
This is the proclamation and this is the plaque that goes along with this. I know you have a lot of lands, so just add this one to your name.
May I say something?
Yes, okay.
First of all, I'd like to give a nomination for council. The next recipient, back in the beginning, when there was only one person in the economic development, Ernie Siggers was my go-to guy. If I couldn't make something, he was always there to help, and I thank him for that. Also, Jim Coleman, he was a mentor for me, even though I'm older than Jim. He was a mentor, and I appreciate all your efforts and everything that, and the fact that you've had in meeting, Mr. Jim. And I wish John Coleman, who will be succeeding me, the best, and I will vouch for him if he needs me.
I just can't say enough about this one. But the Henry Lawrence Award for, is served. Whereas, Lawrence County Council by ordinance established the Henry Lawrence Award for his service to be awarded from time to time for distinguished service to Lawrence County. Whereas, herefore, the Lawrence County Council further acknowledges that the Henry Lawrence Award is the highest and most prestigious award bestowed by the County of Lawrence to its citizens. Whereas, Mr. Ernie B. Siggers, Ernie Chawr, is an acknowledged community leader and has difficulty and titles to serve the citizens of Lawrence County in many capacities, although while performing duties of county administrator with excellence and unselfish for the past 26 years. Whereas, his leadership is due to be commended on both the local, state levels while representing Lawrence County with a stable attitude and presence in times of transition. Whereas, Mr. Siggers as county administrator helped to identify major challenges and opportunities facing the county and was instrumental in many projects for Lawrence County such as countrywide or countywide fire and E-911 services, Lawrence County Higher Education, so the central location of Two County Hospital, construction and the expansion of the Lawrence County Detention Center, renovations of Hill Press Square, as county judicial and services offices, and presently the expansion of our new administrative offices at Hill Press Square. Now therefore it be resolved, Lawrence County Council does hereby commend Ernie B. Siggers for his many years of honorable and dedicated service toward the substantial continuation of progress and development of Lawrence County and does hereby award the Henry Lawrence Award for merit for his service, Mr. Ernie B. Siggers. It's like I said a few minutes ago, I, it's just hard to put in words what I think about this person here. Ernie, I met Ernie probably 22 years ago, and I wasn't on county council. And I used to fester him all the time. I was in the fire service, and I'd come to every council meeting, and I just tell you, he treated me with just as much respect as I could've asked for, and I wasn't even on county council. You can call Ernie about anything, he gonna get back with you with a piece of paper or a telephone call. And I know everybody enjoys reading his articles in the paper. I do, I read every one I can read, and Ernie's proud big grandpa, Ian and White Foe, proud big grandpa, three kids. And, uh, let me see if I left anything else out there. I had so much I wanted to say about him, but, uh, I've always said many times that I felt this man right here was the most important man in Lawrence County. He's the man to go to. It's just like Marvin said, he's the man to go to to get after. It might not always be the way after you want, but, uh, I love him like a father. I do, but I think the world is a man and a wife. He has helped me just to move into this little position I got here. I couldn't ask anybody to help me anymore than Ernie. Congratulations, Eric.
My mother's here, my two sisters, my mother-in-law, and I appreciate them coming. Jim Coleman and Tom and Kathy Hart are good friends of ours, and thank y'all for coming. This means a lot to me. Just, yeah. County, I think, I think it's thanks a lot.
Always gonna make my pitch. Yo, if you're not gonna make a pitch, I'll, I'll, yeah, yeah.
That's worth a brick of blood, sir.
I'd like to thank everyone coming live and congratulate each of the three recipients. Very well deserved. Next thing on our agenda tonight, formal introduction, Ms. Emily K. DeRogues, District Manager, South Carolina Government and Community Relations Team.
Good morning, Councilman and Councilwoman. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm really disappointed, I thought they were all here to see me. Wow. Just wanted to let you know that I'm new in this role. I have taken over the position that Scott Miller left to pursue a real estate career of his very successful wife. I've been with Duke Energy for 28 years. My most recent role has been a large business account executive, so I've called on our large industrial customers in hospitals and schools, so I have a little bit of an industrial background as well as an economic development background because I am the current Chair of the Alliance Organization. Just a little bit about Duke Energy, I wanted to let you know what we've done for you lately. People always like to hear that. Duke Energy serves about 10,000 customers in Lawrence County. We pay about $1.26 million in property taxes. We have, we also pay about $63,000 a year in municipal fees to these large, I mean, to the small municipalities that collect the franchise fee. We gave $5,800 to Share the Warp, the organization that provides assistance with heating and cooling bills. And let's see, what else? We are also highly involved with economic development. We've partnered with Mr. Moss and now our new Economic Development Director coming up. We will work on trying to secure future economic development in the county on the order of CM Transmissions and Sterilite and Unisight, which is now, what's the new one? Interclass, is there a new name? Speed West is a good friend of mine. I will continue to work with him to try to advance the interests of Lawrence County. I have some business cards that I'm happy to share with you. Please do call me if I can do anything to help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next thing is our, we've got a nomination to the Lawrence County Memorial Hospital Award Trustee. Who's the chairman of that meeting? Dr. Fitz, I'll let you make this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate the name of Mr. Randy Aaron. He's the resident of Lawrence, lifelong county resident here. He is a graduate of Lawrence High School, worked in the electrical industry. He's involved in all facets of Lawrence County, and the committee unanimously recommends his appointment to this board.
Okay, you making that recommendation?
Yes.
Do we need a second for that? We don't need a second for that, so, uh, are there any discussions at all?
Mr. Chairman, only, I think this nomination goes to the gentleman for the appointment. We'll bar that, I think it goes, we'll bar that on to the next speaker.
All in favor, we'll show by raising our right hand, all in favor. Approval of certificate consent and agreement ISO policy, Mr. Chris James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of the members of council have been here a little longer, they recall in the past, ISO policy has an old lease back arrangement with the old fee act, and any time they do any refinancing with the lenders, they have to have the county's consent. Can technically own some property and leases developed too. This presents no liability of answer or otherwise in the county, it's simply consenting to allow ISO policy to form, to secure and refinance for their industry. It would be our recommendation that approval be granted, there's no need for resolution, just simply approval to allow Mr. Siggers to execute certificate consent agreement that you had on the ISO policy. You have to answer the questions.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll ask for motion for approval of certificate consent agreement by ISO policy.
Chairman, I have the motion to allow the supervisor to enter into the period of certificate consent. Right, so.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any other discussions? None, we'll vote by showing our right hand, all in favor. Seven, blue. First reading ordinance 799, this is title only, ordinance authorized the execution and delivery of one or more agreements to a company known to the county as D&amp;W finds that, Mr. James.
Chairman, this is the, at this time, this is a conversion, as I just explained, an ISO policy, it's an old lease arrangement. A lot of companies are trying to get away from that, so they don't have to cover some paperwork, the consent agreement that you just approved. D&amp;W is one of those. There's a possibility there may be some other dues forthcoming with them, but right now, this is simply converting from the old lease to a simplified fee. It makes life easier for them. The company does not change any of the fee little things we have, it's a lot easier for the newest council. And there was a certain, and approval of this first reading by title of documentation came in after the agenda package was put out, but that doesn't create a second.
Do I have a motion, first reading ordinance 799, title only?
Seven, blue.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any other questions? None, we'll vote by showing our right hand, all in favor. Seven, blue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next thing is first reading ordinance 800, title only. Just provide a fee and leave agreement for project.
This is part of the previous coach, the rebate package many years ago, and that's how this name came up. This is not soup, it's a, this is an expansion of an existing industry. Park and Co. Farm is one of us in conjunction with this. This is just to get the matter started. This is an existing company that will be expanding, pretty much doubling the investment they have. We would sort of recommend first reading approval by title only of ordinance 800. You have to answer any questions that the council may have. The documentation and paperwork you'll have by the October 14 meeting.
Do we have a motion for first reading ordinance 800, title only?
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any questions? None, we'll vote by None, we vote by showing our right hand, all in favor. Seven blue. Next thing is our administrator report, Mr. Ernie Seeger.
Chairman, I just got a period break tonight, just a couple events coming up. The next one, I think, is Thursday night, Grand Oak with the Main Street Fountain End starts at 6:00. And I think you probably received the invitations to this. I didn't let you know what we were talking about. Another one's coming, the other one was the October 1st, 2015, deep annual legislative barbecue in Piedmont, Texas, over Stony Point, Hollywood County, I think, in Bass, known councilman attended that, so it's, I think, sort of seven counties now, I think, that is pretty good for some broad-based group to attend to this. And that's all I've got left.
I'd like to inject too, we got Mr. Jonathan Coleman with us tonight, he's going to be the new director of Lawrence County Development Corporation, and I'm satisfied he'll make it good.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And I appreciate the committee that worked, I know they had many applicants and they decided on the one they settled with us, so I thank you very much. All right, we have a 15-minute period for further comment. Or hold you comments to five minutes, come forward and state your name and, we'll listen.
Jim Coleman, if you don't know him, but I had problems with dogs, I didn't want this opportunity to pass without congratulating my two friends, Ernie Seger and Mark Moss. For the things that have happened in Lawrence County the last 20 years, it takes a team, and both of these are team players, and I want to congratulate them publicly. Thank you for the job y'all did. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. The floor is still open.
If there's no others, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to come and speak with you.
What is your name?
My name is Larry Bateman, and I'm happy to stand before you, Chairman Joe Wood, Ted Nash, Peter Tollison, Stuart Jones, Diane Anderson, Eric McDaniel, David Fitz. My pleasure to meet you and to have the opportunity to share with you. We live in some really tumultuous days, and last Sunday night, there was 275 people that met in Burns High School Auditorium in Spartanburg County. And I was there and got to hear some things, and I've been at some other meetings to be enlightened about some things that are going on, and I wanted to share with you some things that you needed to be aware of, since your community is in the target zone for what's planned. We live in a country where the president will not participate in the National Day of Prayer, instead of praising Muslims. On July 27th, 2014, he celebrated a Muslim festival at the end of Ramadan, and his, I don't know whether he celebrated his presence or being in it, but he was talking about that. And his comments were, at the completion of Ramadan, it also celebrates the common values that unite us in our humanity and reinforce the obligations that people of all faiths have to each other, especially those impacted by poverty, conflict, and disease. In the United States, this festival is also EID, maybe it's EID, I'm not sure. Also reminds us of the many achievements and contributions of Muslim Americans to building the very fabric of our nation and strengthening the core of our democracy. Do you find that enlightening, that George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Samuel Adams, John Adams, the ones that forged our family documents and the core of our republic? Seems to be a white, really off-base. I was excited to speak to the county council last evening, and I wanted to speak to you and speak to truth and love. I served, I began ministry in 1966, served 18 years for 501(c)(3) organizations ministering to people on over three continents, sharing with people good news and trying to reach out, ministering to people in giving them spiritual aid. So, I don't have an Islamophobia, and so you just need to understand where we're coming from here. I just wanted to speak to you to enlighten you about the refugee debate, exposed immigration fraud, and extinguishing the flame of those whose worldview and culture is committed to fundamentally changing America to something that she was never intended to be. It was reported on 9/17 of this year, that 22 immigrants arrived in Germany. Did you hear about that train leaving? Well, that's good. Immigrants arrived there. How many women were on board? Zero. How many children were on board? Zero. Who was on board? Young men. The average refugee is 25 years of age, single. Average. That's a lot of testosterone to be lost on any community, whether it's in Germany or here, I think. Think about it. These are not my words, but these are the words that came out of the German press. I'm going to quote that. "A shocking German document dated August 18 from a refugee center in Hessen, Germany, sounds the alarm about Muslim immigrants." These are the words of the Germans, not me. "The Muslims are raping the women and children." Clearly state that is not incidental, it happens a lot. Women don't dare go to the bathroom at night and sleep in their clothes by day. You see, we should welcome people to this country as immigrants that are properly vetted. Michael Cutler, 30-year veteran of the INS, was with me last night when we testified to the county council in Spartanburg, and he testified that the person that plotted to put a bomb in Times Square was arrested, stood before the judge, and just after his naturalization, becoming a citizen, and was asked by the judge, "Why did you do this?" He said, "I hate this country, I hate everything you stand for. I lie. It's okay for me to lie because of my religion and my culture." So, in Muslim lands, when women go anywhere, they are always escorted by a man. Why is that? Because of this very thing, it's culturally acceptable to bless whoever's fair game is out there. I've done some research.
One man left.
One man left, thank you, sir. I've done some research with World Relief, Spartanburg, and they tell me that 80% of the people that they brought here are Christians, and less than 13% are Muslims, the rest are atheists and paragons. The governor signed into law, signed into law, signed a permission for the US state department to send in through World Relief or eight other agencies like World Relief into places, into South Carolina, refugees, etc. And you need to call for hearings to be in Lawrence County, so that people have an opportunity to hear about what's going to happen and what kind of people are going to be brought here. You need to take the initiative as men and women that are patriots here in this awesome county, stand up and say, "Well, they say it's about the governor's job, but they say it's about our delegation's job." You need to stand up as individuals and say, "No, we're not going to take people unless they're properly vetted, unless we have an opportunity to have a hearing here to find out what it's about so our citizens are not taken by surprise." So I implore you, discuss this among yourselves, to make a decision, we will pass a resolution. The most powerful man in Lawrence County is the sheriff. Give him on your side and take it to the governor, take it through your county representatives, take it all the way to the top to Washington. Trey Gowdy promised that he was going to call for a moratorium on this, and it will be further investigated, probably in the next couple of weeks, there'll be a hearing in Washington. Problem is, we don't need hearings, we need listening. The people aren't listening. They didn't listen last night and decided to take no action because the chairman was no southern hospitality, threw, slapped the gavel down, and said, "It's the governors," and shut down the meeting and it was done. I hope, sir, that you will have an open heart to hear my pleas on behalf of the citizens of Lawrence County, and you'll say, "Hey, we need to talk about this and be aware and take some action so that we can prevent anybody coming here to harm our children, our wives, people in our community." And with this great line of candor, what God wants to be here on this earth. Thank you. I'm a resident of Spartanburg County. I was invited here by Stuart.
I appreciate you coming. Are there anybody else? If they're not, we'll close our, put the comment time, and we'll listen to the comments of council members. We'll talk with Mr. Tollison, Bert. I want to give and congratulate the three recipients of the Henry Lawrence Board, all three of these individuals who work tirelessly in our county over here. And I just want to make sure we appreciate their contribution, all, to the sake of this stuff. Mr. Knight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take my little time to announce the city of Fountain End, Mr. Coleman coming back. Well, on Thursday, September 24th, 15, 5:30, 9 o'clock, have a ceremony at the six, the intersection of Main and Trade for EIP reception and follow. But they don't have food, music, and look at that, new town, all the new lights, and it's quite amazing what they have done at Fountain End, and all the stores are now filled with, almost all of them, they might even want to, filled with markets now. So, I'd like to invite you, this is the letter, the county of Fountain End, Dave Turner, but I knew about it, we talked about it, Rotary is, the one. I'd like to invite this Fountain End cam, that's the Thursday, September 24th, 15, 5:30, 9, and then 6 o'clock, have a little, easy one, so celebration.
What's the date on that?
September 24th, Thursday, that's 30th. 5:30 to 9, and then pick up again at 6 p.m. Never stops in Main and Trade.
That is it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Ms. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Number one, want to congratulate once again the Henry Lawrence recipients. Thank you for all that you guys have done for Lawrence County and all that you continue to do for our county. Number two, want to thank Mr. Bateman, Larry Bateman, for being here tonight, and I'm definitely watching this situation, appreciate your insight on what's going on. You know, the people of Lawrence County pay about $4 billion a year for law enforcement here in Lawrence County, and that's exactly what our law enforcement does, is protect private property, and so that's what we'll move forward in doing. Number three, I wanted to mention the Positive Management Leadership, which is a company that helps leaders in Fortune 500, 8,000 companies across the world. Some of their clients include BMW, Boeing, many other, they've offered to do a session, a class for the county, for our administration, county council, department head, sometime the week of October 5th, it would be a one-hour class that we would be taking with the Positive Management Leadership. There's a packet for everybody, information on everything for everybody, and so we just need to schedule that day. They've offered to do it free of charge, and I think it would be extremely beneficial to us.
Ms. Andrews.
Are we following up on this program that Mr. Stewart just brought to you before this evening? What are we doing with this?
He, Ms. Jones, sent me an email about it, we've talked about it a couple times, I think, and I've been on the line, looked at the websites that the company offers. I don't have, I think it's, what I know of the company seems like a positive thing, I don't have a problem with it. It's something we've not done before, as far as providing in, outside parties, if you will. And before we did, I just want to make sure that the council were aware of it. I don't think it'd be, I think it'd be hours program, no cost, looks like the company's well-qualified, from what I've seen and read, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware of it before we do.
If no one's got any objection, we can let Mr. Seger in line to do it.
I have objections, because the Association of Counties, who we are members and part of, provide educational training for all county employees, and anything that a county sees fit, that they need, they offer. And also, they have offered enough credit for every department head, which is Senator Ram, the county, and the work of the county, and I would thank that with it. I just don't think that would be appropriate when you have someone from the outside coming in, doing a program whom we already have an in-house program. If they want to go through the Association of Counties, and the Association of Counties see that this is a program that we need, it's a whole different ballpark. But I just don't believe this is something that we should allow here at the county level, because we have a set training program for all county employees. So, some kind of, they have leadership training, effective leadership, and so forth and so on, I don't know anything that we need that they don't offer. And I know just this past week, and I can't remember the name of the training, but then you get them in the mail, what was the name of it? You know what's the name of it? I just can't, anybody know? Because I received mine personally in the mail, as well as all the rest of the council members, you would also, but one official should come to the county also. And they have webcast, they have several things offered to all employees, and on top of the elected officials, we have two said programs that we go through for leadership, one, we have a Level 1 and a Level 2, and you have also above the Level 2, if you want to take some of those classes. So I feel like we already have in-house a training program that we need, and we already paid for a training program we need, and I think they're getting the services that we need, and until I can see something different from what the services that we already receive, I'm totally against it.
I don't think it's the program that tried to change anybody's mind about anything, it's just. It's just something that if somebody wants to sit down and listen to, they can, if they don't want to listen to it, they ain't got, they haven't got to listen to it.
It's just a class on leadership tools, and it may be very similar to what you're talking about.
But we, I'm saying, we already offer that, so I don't see where we need to go outside for something that we already offer, going to be different than something that we did not offer.
Well, this business may have some insight, being that they work with Fortune 500 and 5,000 companies, they help give their leaders and their management the tools, and so they may, it's just an hour class, you know, they're just going to give us some.
I don't care if it's just two minutes, but I really believe that we should be having classes that is offered through the association, not through any other companies, unless we go through the association, and it is something that the employees ask for, and not something that one of our councilmen asks for.
I think it would be beneficial to our county, to the leaders of our county. I think it would be beneficial to our county, to the leaders of our county.
I'm not saying it's not beneficial, I'm saying it's not a set program.
What, what, when I heard it?
Oh, all in favor of letting Stuart care of this file, writing right name?
I'm already taken that vote yet. I didn't know this was coming under the vote.
I tell you what study we'll bring back next May.
I, I, and I would like to, I'm not opposed to outside classes at all. As a matter of fact, I'm a fan of leadership classes and leadership courses. I'm not opposed to this one, I've not done deep delve of research. I didn't realize it was coming through a vote. But what I would like to ask Mr. Seegers, if he studied this and recommended it, and if he hasn't, that's fine, I would like to close the phone. If Mr. Seegers has, and he wants to offer it to his staff, I'm not opposed to offering this stuff, because it's going very much, because it's not a mandatory training, and as long as right now it's no cost to the county, I'm not in opposition to this.
I, I have not talked personally with Mr. Dunn, or anything, but it's a Greenwood-based operation, thing like, and we don't, and what the answer is talking about is exactly right, you know, there are programs available, but, and we've got webcast that we, we take advantage of. I don't see particular harm in, I don't think it could, nothing makes us break one way or the other. But, you know, again, and my, and I, Mr. Jones, to the very, we've had conversations, you know, we've talked this through, and my, my situation is, I don't want to open something and sit up front and open something to the outside, good or bad, that, you know, this council are aware of, because, you know, I mean, we, I think you all set policy for what we do, and that was my intent, and Jones, you know, we would bring it forward and have a discussion. Hour of time, you know, we could divide, we could divide space in here, and I would say part, but again, I do, you know, I'm kind of, kind of complimentary on this one. You know, I do understand what the Association of Counties does about excellent, excellent program, but I think some of you've been through it, and they graduate from it, so we'll do whatever you all recommend.
Okay, we're going to receive this as an motion right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, again, I'm not in opposition to the program, I love leadership training, and spend a lot of time personally in terms of doing that, but I do certain avenues with that. Do we possibly take, take a poll in our department leaders and see if they would be willing to, and I don't bring this guy down, two people out, I think it's not fair to the company as well as we're at our department. Is there something that we could do as well?
We, we have not made available to the department yet, we'll try to do that. We'd like to do that over the next couple days, do something.
That's their opinion, and, and, again, this is after Enwood, and what I've seen on it is certainly positive, I've not seen anything negative.
Right now, we're going to receive it as an motion, and we've talked about it in the coming week. Ian Liger, for Sun.
Not missing anything.
Mr. McDaniel?
I'd like to once again congratulate the Henry Lawrence members, and also Jonathan Coleman, looking forward to working with you even closer in the future. Marvin, sad to see you go. Ever since I began, or even running for council, you've been very helpful to me in any way that you could, and I appreciate it. And that's it, thank you.
Mr. P.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo Mr. McDaniel, and I'd like to publicly thank three people for what I believe has led Lawrence County to where we are now. It's in a very good position in our state, named Marvin Moss, Mr. Jim Coleman, Mr. Ernie Seegers, and the previous councils that have supported those things. So once again, thank you to each one of you. I think you have, each one of you has left a legacy for those of us who remain to follow that is, will be very difficult to follow, but I want to publicly say thank you to Arthur. Thanks.
I have a black year from the Hall of Heroes Celebration, Veterans Affairs, that Lawrence County Council for appreciation and support. And I, I guess we could put it on this table over here, too. And on a little bit heavier note, I think, I'd like to publicly congratulate my wife, we've been married big years, this third day. Done real well, put that well back on. We got an executive session, we got an employment matter, a contractual matter. Do I have a motion to go on and say?
Seven blue.
All in favor, write right name. We'd like a five-minute process.
Your turn.
We're backing up the session, we lost the council members, why wouldn't we back there? We had an employment matter, no action taken, we had a contractual matter, no action taken. Does anyone else have any questions, or anything else coming for council tonight? Not to stand and go.